Oh, there we go.
Okay. It's six thirty. Welcome everyone to Phoenix Planning Commission meeting Tuesday. This is May twenty seven, two thousand and twenty five. Um, roll call please.
Chair Helfrich.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson is absent. Commissioner Monsot is absent. Commissioner Les?
Here.
Commissioner McFadden. Do not see her on Zoom. She's absent. Um, Commissioner Norpson?
Here.
And Commissioner Adams here. Looks like we have a quorum.
We have a quorum. So at this time, I invite everyone who is willing and able to um stand for the pledge allegiance of the flag. Thank you. All right, it looks like we're looking at the minutes from May twelfth. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at those minutes? That looks like. Anybody need more time?
I'm with it. We approve the minutes.
No, I'm going to recuse myself from voting because I was calling in and it was hard to hear.
Yeah.
I guess I'll have a second because there's I was at the meeting. And you guys. What's that? Is that okay?
No, I was called in too. It's very difficult.
No, she was not.
Uh, yeah.
Point of order. You you don't need to be at the meeting to approve minutes. If you've read the minutes, you can approve the minutes even though you weren't there. But some people think that if you're not in the meeting.
Well, it was more of I would I can't attest to the accuracy of number.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's because, yeah, you can read the minutes, but maybe there was something that said that.
It wasn't always unclear.
Okay. So roll call? Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I did.
Uh, Commissioner Les?
Yes.
Commissioner Norpson? Abstain. Commissioner Adams?
Uh, abstain. Okay, and Chair Helfrich?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Alrighty, um.
Yeah, I had to learn that. I know, it's like.
Okay, so old, old business. I guess we have a video that were.
Well, we put this under old business.
But it's planning commission training.
Yeah, we did a training for it was on. The training last. That's why it's under old business.
So that's what we're doing.
Yep. And I'm going to be as detail oriented as you would like or as little as you would like. You've had a few weeks now to look at some of this stuff. Hopefully be able to use some of the references that were in there. Uh, but nevertheless, it's still good to go over it. Um, it is thirty slides. Uh, some of the slides will go quicker than others. Um, and I. There are a number of slides, but I would encourage you to ask questions as we go along and see how this is your training. Um, if you want to in your package, um, there's also a. Place for you to write notes next to the slide that you have questions about if you want to reserve your question for a minute. But either way, uh, works for me. Um, this is my first time actually giving training. Um, but it was a good exercise for me to go through as well to make sure that you all understand, you know, what your role is.
Can I? You know, I I shame on me. I overlooked public comments, but no, there's nobody here, no signup sheet. So is there anybody online?
No, there's not.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. All right, hey, well, carry on. All right. So this is your planning commissioner training. And really, um, there there are a number of things that we're going to talk about. Um, and I'm just going to go through these one by one. I'll try not to read it, um, as I just kind of get into it. It'll be a little bit easier, but uh, really, what is land use planning? And and planning. Planning is a. In the city jurisdiction is much different than maybe your county jurisdiction. Um, there it involves making a decision. It involves making different types of decisions. The county, uh, the counties and the cities will make. Uh, over the counter decisions or ministerial decisions. They'll make limited land use decisions which require public notice and they'll make other types of decisions such as quasi judicial. Decisions that come to the planning commission. Uh, but it is a very step by step process and it's very um recipe oriented, if you will. I like to, I like to think of planning as a, as a recipe book. Uh, if you can, if you can make a batch of cookies, you can generally read the zoning code. Now, with that said, when you're making your batch of cookies, sometimes the the recipe is not, it it leaves out a step. Or the step is, you know, not necessarily easy to understand. And sometimes we end up with that in planning as well. The code will have uh nuances in it that um. Are hard to understand or they conflict with other sections of the code. You'll notice some set, some zoning codes if you, if you've looked at any different ones. Um, since you've been a planning commissioner or. Um, in the past, uh, they generally have a statement in the front of the zoning code that says if there's a conflict in the code, the stricter of the. Of the two issues or three issues apply. Uh, and we go by that as well. So it's not always clear and objective. Um, and um, sometimes you have to make uh discretionary calls. Um, and you know, so planning can also be a couple of different things. It can be uh current planning. Can be your everyday planning, building permits, um, uh, or building development plans, or it can be long range planning. Um, which I don't think a lot of you have gotten the opportunity, Commissioner Loz, I know you as being on the counselor. As mayor, you've been through some long term or long range planning, but this would be like a comprehensive plan amendments and things like that. Uh, so that's kind of just an overall, this is what land use planning is. We're going to dive into the individual things. Uh, here, but we're going to also talk about why to plan. Why do communities plan? And and we plan for a number of reasons. Uh, we need to make sure that we address the needs um of the community, whether that's. From a land use perspective or from a public facilities perspective. And and those things, those two things go hand in hand. More land you plan to develop, the more public facilities you need to have. And you need to plan accordingly. Need to prepare, prepare for the future and anticipate changes. Uh, maximizing strengths and weaknesses and minimizing weaknesses in the code. Um, this is super difficult to do, uh, because. When we create zoning codes, we we do it with the best intentions. But inevitably, you create unintended consequences whenever you start tinkering with the code. And when we have wholesale code amendments like we've recently had, you've seen where you change this. But you don't change that, then you have created a conflict and then you have to decide. Well, you usually go if you find it, you go in there and you fix the conflict and then hopefully you didn't break it someplace else. It happens all the time. It's inevitable. Uh, and that's why zoning codes get changed so frequently. Uh, you also have to re uh respond to state federal mandates. These have become. Much more common in the last five to ten years where. The state, whether it's through legislative process or whether it's through a, a, an executive order by the governor. Um, will mandate that you shall do this or you shall not do that. And we're seeing a lot of those now. And you saw a lot of those in the recent code updates with the parking mandates and the solar mandates. Now, those were mostly legislative. Um, I believe. Um, one of the first parking mandates was an executive order. It was just, it was the governor saying. Every city shall do this. If you're this size, you're going to do this. If you're this size, you're going to do that. And.
What if you say, no, we don't want to do that?
What's that?
What if we say, no? We're not going to abide by an executive order from the governor.
Well, because those executive orders generally get put into stat, into an O A R or to statute. Um, via other means and then you don't have a choice, right? Uh, if it's part of the stat, I mean, I suppose you can until, until the state says, you know, you're in violation of it and then they start sanctioning. Cities for doing things that they're not supposed to.
Could it be hinged to funding also? You know.
Um, yeah, I I think, you know.
He's like, oh, these guys are kind of stubborn, you know?
I think that there are a lot of, there are a lot of communities that would, that would probably that. Will push the envelope. I mean, we've pushed the envelope not to adopt the parking mandates until we wanted to make sure that it was clear of all of its legal hurdles. It still really isn't, but that issue is kind of resolved and people have just come to the conclusion that. You know, parking mandates are going to be a thing. Now, our job from the long range standpoint in that situation is to. Make better plans and make better use of our space. And we've done that. When we saw the parking mandates come. We went and got a grant and we're building four parking lots with a hundred and twenty nine parking spaces. We, we, and 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 we also know that, you know, uh, and I'm just gonna, I'm going to continue on the parking one because it's the most recent one. But we also know that with a parking mandate, if. You don't have minimums, that doesn't mean that developers aren't going to create parking. And the state understood that, right? Because the state said, okay, well, we understand you're going to make parking when you need it and you're going to make. Miles and miles and acres and acres of parking lots. So if you're going to do that, then you're going to do X, Y, and Z to be climate friendly. Or to address a better concern. So. Uh, so we, we have to respond to those. They're very hard to. Keep track of. It changes so frequently. And thankfully, we do have the Department of Land Conservation and Development, which. Generally does a good job of helping to guide instead of force. Um, and will, will let us know of grants that are available and things of that nature so that we can. We can get to a point where we can comply. The hardest part about that is, is when we come to you all and say, hey, we need to make the, we need to do the zoning code amendment. Oregon planning was built on uh, public outreach and public comment. Goal one of the Oregon State Planning Goals, and we'll talk about that in a minute. We, we really take all of that out when the state says you shall do this. Here's the model code that you need to adopt or you have to adopt this. It really takes the people out of planning. Um, and. And it makes it tough for you all when people come in and say, well, we don't want that. Why are you doing that? Well. Why are we even having a public hearing, right? Um, and, and so that's been a long, a longstanding issue and we'll talk about that a little bit too. Um, protecting resources, um, building a sense of community. Um, whenever you do zoning code amendments, you're always trying to resolve a specific situation. Whether it's to meet the housing needs or whether it's to generate commerce in your city or, you know, creating industrial land for, you know, bigger development. You know, community development and economic development is, they go hand in hand, just like public works and community development do. We want to, we want to generate land development so that we generate tax revenue so that we can continue to run the city. Um, and then also, and probably most important is to protect public health, safety and welfare. We try to do that as much as we can with the zoning code, but a lot of times the, the public safety and the health. Welfare issues are dealt through the municipal code. And you'll see that those things are just adopted by ordinance and they're done differently. So Oregon's land use planning framework, uh. For those that don't know, Oregon's land use uh, planning system began in nineteen seventy three under Senate Bill one hundred. Uh, it was a big thing at the time and if, if you lived in Oregon at the time and, and. Were alive. I, I was not alive when this happened, nor did I have any inkling to do planning, but. People understood that the rules were changing and it was going to be difficult to do. Some of the things that they had previously done. And we saw that. Effect when measure thirty seven and measure forty nine were adopted to allow you to go back to the rules that were in effect. On top of dropping in nineteen seventy three. So it wasn't intended to make things tough. It was intended to prevent urban sprawl. And there are lots of examples and I, I don't, I, I hope I don't offend anybody, but if you drive through Nevada and you drive through. Highway fifty, let's say. You will see urban sprawl like crazy. And it's because Nevada has no urban plant, you know, urban long range planning. You see, you know, uh, little housing developments and then you'll see nothing and then you'll see what, you know, one or two houses and then you'll see nothing. And it's, it's sprawl. And that's what was intended to be resolved with this.
I don't know that that really applies to us too much because uh, regional problem solving really kind of um. Roadmap or put in a. A master plan in the valley. And I think we should all just rest on that, that that is a complete final document. And so this is.
It is. And and we'll talk about comprehensive planning. Um, there are. There still are opportunities to, to impact or to change the regional planning. It hasn't happened yet, mostly because people don't want to go through that process again.
They may not know a regional planning.
So we're going to, we're going to, yeah, okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that with the comprehensive planning, but. Uh, but you, you are right. We, we do have a framework here for a, a more regional planned approach to. How the urban, uh, the urban areas develop. And, and specifically, you know, we've talked about P H three and P H five. Those are all urban areas that were identified through the regional planning process. Uh, and those are our areas to grow, our priority areas. Excuse me. It doesn't mean we can't grow in other areas. It doesn't mean people can't come in and make application to expand. You know, south of Phoenix where we don't have those. It just makes it complicated because we've already identified. The primary farmland that we would like to see out of production and converted to urban land.
So. I just can't imagine that happening. I mean, it was, I mean, it went through attorneys, every city. And I mean, it was a hard process to even believe that it got passed. Through the attorneys in every city, citizen involvement. I mean, it, it's. Pretty set in stone, I would think. It's going to be hard for anybody to break it.
For us, um, we have a couple of other urban expansion areas. Uh, and then, and then if we looked to expand in elsewhere, then you'd have to meet the Oregon State Planning Goals that we'll talk about in a minute. Um, so more on the, on the planning framework. So it established the Land Conservation Development Commission. That's L C D C. And they, they are the, the group that really watches over the Department of Land Conservation and Development. So their elected board of commissioners that, that. Really drive and vote on how D L C D is going to function. The Department of Land Conservation and Development is going to function. And how they are going to generate rules, create rules, um, propose or propose rules to be adopted, those types of things. All cities uh, and counties have to adopt a comprehensive plan that was required. Um, you, you'll see our comprehensive plan wasn't adopted until the early eighties. It took a lot of cities a long time to get to the point of developing these top plans. Uh, but they did. And larger cities have to uh, do more frequent updates to their comprehensive plans. Smaller cities don't. Uh, and that is changing too, as the, as the rules, the states, the mandates come down more. Uh, you, you'll see, you'll see governor, both governors recently have identified lands in the outside of the urban growth boundary. That should just be brought in because they want microchip manufacturing firm. Uh, and, and sidestep the rules. Um, so you see it falling apart just a little bit, but it, it doesn't ever make headway because. The, the planning framework is so strong that it, I think it's pretty self. I think it's pretty self sufficient. I think it's, it's going to survive a lot of challenges. Um, but, and, and if you can do planning in Oregon, then you can do planning anywhere. That's the other, that's the other thing people say. Uh, also, uh, all local plans must comply with the nineteen statewide planning goals. We'll talk about those in just a minute.
Mister Chairman? I'm going to step out for a few minutes. Now, we don't have a, if I step out, we certainly have a quorum. We have four people. But if I step out, we don't have a quorum. But according to Oregon laws. It, it says here, in Oregon, a municipal member living and returning during a meeting can technically cause momentary disruption. To the quorum, but it's unlikely to violate public meeting law. As long as it's not part of a pattern of repeated absences and the meeting is properly convened and adjourned.
Yeah, we're not making a decision here anyway.
So I'm going to step off in just a few minutes. I'm going to come back.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
Can I go there?
Yeah, that's fine. No, it's. I mean, we got a lot of pages to go through, so.
We're good, man.
Okay.
Uh, so land use planning in historical context and, and again, I'm going to try to just be brief on most of this because. You, you all have different levels of understanding of planning and I, I don't want to bore you to death either, but you all did ask for. A training um, with a, a fairly high level of detail. So, um, Oregon's land use planning in a historical context. Um. Uh, you know, statewide concerns begin in the nineteen sixties again around population growth and, and the loss of farmland in the Willamette Valley, really. Um, highlighted the need for more coordination of statewide planning because. Areas like Eugene and Springfield and Salem, Portland metro area were starting to expand into farmland. And you were starting to see the urban sprawl that they didn't want to see. And so the legislation at the time is. Uh, created the Senate Bill one hundred, um, and. Uh, made it mandatory for, for cities to have these planning programs, especially the comprehensive planning. So that if you were wanting to expand um, your city limits, you had to do so within an urban growth boundary. Uh, urban growth boundaries are kind of unique to Oregon, uh, unique in the sense that Oregon is one of the. Few states that really have urban growth boundaries. Other cities do, like California does a lot of state uh, planning, um, at the state level. Uh, don't have a lot of urban growth boundaries and, and urban reserves and things like that. Uh, the process. So eight key steps, identifying issues, opportunities and assumptions. Uh, we, we as a staff will formulate goals. Um, we collect and analyze data. We revise goals to determine the objectives. Um, develop and evaluate alternative plans. We implement plans and then we monitor and amend the plan. So from our perspective, what we do is we start with what we have and then. Well, that's, that's kind of loud, isn't it? Uh, we start with what we have, uh, and, and every city works a little bit different. There's, there's generally turnover in cities. And, and planners have different viewpoints on things and some planners have, uh, are a little more. Uh. How do I say it? Um. Pushy, if you will, uh, of their, of their personal objectives to planning and that, you know, comes out into. The codes that they, that they try to adopt. Um, I, I'm not immune to that either. I mean, there are things that, that I'm passionate about that I'd like to see. Um, but I think we, we all have to be careful as planners not to. Um, not to try to come in and, and, and whole, wholesale change everything. Um, you know, to meet our personal, this is why we have a planning commission. This is why we have a comprehensive plan. Uh. And then, you know, we, we're charged with implementing that plan and then we're charged with making sure that that plan is still continuing to work. And you're, you're going through that process now a little bit with a strategic plan. Uh, some of you, I think actually all three of you have provided, um, you know, your thoughts on what you would like to see the planning commission do. Uh, and that's what we take to the, to the council and say, this is what we want to do from a planning standpoint. And once that gets adopted, then, then we work to amend the plan to fit those goals. Hopefully those goals align with the city and the participant and the citizens as well. Statewide, let's see, land use key elements. Uh, we talked about this, but um, statewide planning goals are a key function, the comprehensive plan. Um, land conservation and development, there are, they play a big role in how we adopt plans, how we get them acknowledged. Um, every time we notice a comprehensive plan amendment change or uh, a zoning code amendment. We have to notify L C D C or D L C D. Um, we provide them notice. Statutorily, we have to provide them thirty five days notice and then they have the final. Uh, appeal ability, if you will, um, if they don't like what we're proposing or if it's not in compliance with statute. This is where D L C D will call these types of things out. Uh, plan acknowledgements and amendments, that's just your comprehensive plan amendments. Uh, urban growth boundaries, those are key to land use planning. And then the types of land use regulations that you adopt. Um, are the elements that we have to focus on. And then, of course. From a city perspective and even a county perspective, citizen involvement, the public process is still goal one of the Oregon State Planning Goals. And it's still our job to hold public hearings, to give people the opportunity to comment. Uh, to be involved in the process, whether it's a master plan, whether it's a comprehensive plan, whether it's a zoning code amendment, whether it's a landing section. Uh, and we're starting to see a little bit of a shift from the state level where more things are becoming. More standards based and less discretionary and less use of planning commissions to make decisions. Um, mostly, I, again, this is, you know, from a professional level, looking down at what, what we're going through is, is that. The NIMBYism that we deal with sometimes, when you get to a public hearing. And you're talking about, I'll say, for example, affordable housing, um, affordable housing. You know, has a, a way of, of bringing out the worst in people at a public hearing. Uh, and so you'll see the state start drifting from, you know, discretionary planning commission decisions for affordable housing. To more standards based where you check the box and say yes or no, and it's not appealable. Uh. That seems counter to our public involvement into goal one. And so we still have a lot of opportunities for people to participate in the process. We haven't changed our code entirely to remove. The planning commission's process. Um, we still have conditional use permits that require the planning commission to make decisions. Uh, the planning commission is also used when we make a, an administrative decision and it's appealed to the planning commission. For uh, whatever reason, whether it's the applicant or whether it's the, um, you know, opposition, uh. Wishing to appeal the city's decision.
You get around like. Huge non expectations. It, it's a coming out of the governor's office. You, you have to do this. But then you have to hold a hearing, which having a hearing gives an expectation of you're going to be responsive to the community, but.
But you can. And, and, and it's unfortunate. I think many, many of planners have said to the state, we don't mind implementing these, but you should just adopt them. And you should, you should be the one to present to these planning commit, you know, at the planning commission. And you should be the one to tell the public that the decision's already been made at the state level. Um, it, it is tough because. We present, like, we'll present all of the parking standards and the E V stuff. Then, you know, pretty soon it's going to be the climate friendly um, areas where we'll have to identify areas of high density where people don't want it. Um, you know, removing single family dwellings as a outright permitted use. Not removing them, but taking a single family low density zone and allowing duplexes, triplexes and quadplexes. In single family neighborhoods, requiring the cities allow those and that they're ministerial decisions, that they're just made over the counter. Uh, or through a standards based process. So this is, this becomes problematic if you live in a subdivision that has, you know. Single family homes, sixty foot wide streets, you know, your typical ninety subdivision. And somebody buys a, a lot next to you, tears the house down and builds a fourplex. Um, and the community doesn't have much to say about it.
I think where, where I've seen this be successful. Is Larson Creek area. And you know that area really well, where you have cottage homes. You have. These type of homes and the developer is willing to do that, but that's, that's a whole new groundbreaking project.
Right.
And it, it's, I like it because it, it's, um. It's just, it's opportunities for people of different incomes to live together in the same area and, and that. And it's not, the, the, it's, it's bicycle friendly and everybody, it's, it's, it's a village concept. And so I think we're just good there. That's my best view of where I've seen this work. Um, but you're right, as far as, I mean, I've seen historic homes torn down here in Phoenix and. Put in a modular.
Yeah.
Just was wrong, but if, as long as they fall within our code, would that, that's, that's just it.
Well, you see different, you see different uh, patterns for review process, right? So and the, and the example that Chair Helfrich was giving, you know, in the Larson Creek area, when you're mixing commercial and residential and. Different types of housing, but you're not including affordable housing. Then you have to do a planned unit development and it has to go through a very complex process in order to get approved. But if you're, if you're doing an affordable housing project, you're exempt from almost every rule. That applies. Uh, and it's getting, it's getting even, and I'm, 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 don't get me wrong. I'm not trying to dog, I'm dogging on the process more than. And I'm I'm I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to dog, I'm dogging on the process more than than anything, but. Um but either are new Senate bills that were just put into uh regulations where. You know, if you're building affordable housing, you don't have to meet all the rights, you don't have to meet all the setbacks. You can get setback reductions to, you know, to next to nothing, except for if you have to meet building code, right? So. And and your density, you can increase your density. Um if you're building affordable housing and and these are things that have unintended consequences, right?
Some theory that would like negate what we just asked last week, for example, two weeks ago.
Right. Well.
Good. I I guess the situation could arise where.
Y- y- yes, well, I think I think which what we see, are you talking about the parking code?
Well, no, just in general, I just, I guess I don't want to be off the way to the the ways here. I'm just thinking process, because process matters so much.
Right.
It's just something just put more notice on us and you.
Right.
Do more education and not reach up front and like, hey, this is just the situation. This is coming down, this is a little bit of wiggle room.
Yeah.
That we have, but hands are kind of tied.
Yeah, and 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 you'll see, you'll see the the grips of the state tightening just a little bit more when. These house bills are put into, you know, an O A R into an administrative rule where, you know. If it's affordable housing and it meets this standard, you know, you have to allow X, Y and Z. We already see it with. A housing project we approved over on Grove Road and Fern Valley Road. It's it's a high. Highly used commercial area next to a truck stop. That because a Senate bill was adopted that allows affordable housing to be built anywhere. Industrial land, commercial land, residential land, you can't exempt it. You you have to let it be there. And so so this. Takes away from the community's ability to better control their community, right?
Yeah.
It's more of a state model of this is what we're going to do as a state. Um and 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 again, yes, you're right. The challenge is, is how do you navigate that with the public? And um that's our job. When, you know, a land use action comes through that does come to the planning commission still or or is on appeal. You know, we have to navigate you through that process to say, well, this is a standard. It either meets or it doesn't meet. This is discretionary. This is what you have the ability to, you know. Uh exercise a little bit of flexibility or not. Uh so.
Well, it's it's just good to know that that's kind of the changing environment that, you know, we're all dealing with now. So just to be. You know, aware of the friction.
Yeah, and and it it's been a long time coming. It just seems like, it seems like certain. Events, whether it was COVID or whether it was the wildfires, have given the state ability to come in and make changes that. You know, people see, they, on the outside, they look great. But from a community planning standpoint. You know, is putting in an eighty eight year end affordable housing project next to a truck stop really the best idea? It's going to work out because there's some other residential over there, but. This is where we have these rules for a reason. So. Uh all right, moving on. Uh land use planning goals, um talk about those a little bit. Um there's the development of the goals and then there's the purpose of the goals. And really, it's just a balance, public safety, public participation, economic growth, natural resource protection. Um all of the goals are designed to guide the, you know, to guide development. Um there are nineteen statewide planning goals. We'll we'll zoom through them here really quickly. Only fourteen of them really apply to us here. The other uh the other fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, the other five. Um are either Willamette Valley or coastal uh goal planning. So as I said, nineteen goals, um citizen involvement in land use planning are are the. Goal one and goal two, um development goals, um. Some of you may have been around when we did economic opportunities analysis. I think you you've lived around here for a while, so you've probably seen. Uh and and Commissioner Adams, I think you've been around here for a while too, right?
Two and two and a half years.
Yeah, so in Phoenix, we haven't, we haven't done any major like uh. Economic analyses or analyses or um housing analyses or public facilities for even that matter. We started the transportation system plan update and. You know, because the transportation planning rules changed at the state, we 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 got stopped in our tracks and we have to meet. Oregon tr- transportation planning rules that we can't afford to go amend our code to do until the state allows us to. Um we're working through that now because we're in a situation where we've adopted urban reserve area into the U G B. North Phoenix Road area is now in the city limits, but we can't change it from the farm zoning. Or the holding zone that it's in to the zone that we need to develop until we're consistent with the state's planning rules for transportation. Uh and those are directly outlined in uh in part of the goals. And then conservation goals, um again, talking about conserving agricultural forest lands, natural resources, air, water. Natural hazards, recreation areas, um and then on in the Willamette uh valley, the Willamette River and then coastal and ocean resources. Um and the goal is to create livable, equitable communities. Uh so there's uh the goals, uh did you have a question? Sorry.
I did. Um kind of re- rethinking this, affordable housing. Is, wh- where is the definition of affordable housing? In other words, it it, I mean, it it's. I I don't understand that. You know, in other words, let's say like a modular home park. Those modular homes are a couple hundred thousand dollars there. Then you got. Your monthly rates and and you never owned the property and so. That doesn't seem affordable, but maybe it is. I, you know, again, I I don't know. I know in California as an example. Where they built um condos, uh townhouses. But they had to have certain amount of them who had to be small and affordable. And that's that size to me is what. Is what drives affordable. In other words, the bigger the home. The more it costs. The smaller the home, affordable is, now you're talking about that. Is so it is affordable? When the state, when the state comes out with affordable, I just, or anybody talks about affordable. In other words, obviously, a five hundred square foot dwelling is cheaper than a twenty five hundred square foot dwelling, so.
But it depends on the location. And and I think it's a moving target. Uh the the simple answer is, is that the affordable housing definition is a moving target and and. And if you look at different areas of statute, if you went in and looked at. Or S one ninety seven, which is city planning. And you look at, if there was a definition in there of affordable housing, it might be different. Than the definition of affordable housing in a different set of rules. And and it's based on area median income mostly.
On income.
On on income, so. Uh but but that number, that percentage number changes. Sometimes it's a hundred and twenty percent of median household income. Sometimes it's eighty percent of median household income.
And where's that come from?
The median household income, it comes from the census data. Uh a- as far as which number they choose, I think it really just depends on how affordable they're looking to make the housing.
Who's they? I mean, the state.
They be in the state. So the so when the rules are drafted and they're put into the O A Rs, there's. There there are usually definitions associated with them to help gu- guide you through what they mean. Um I mean, and it's true for everything, whether it's, whether it's uh D E Q stuff, whether it's. You know, other environmental things, you know, O D F and W, the competition wildlife. There there's not a lot of consistency across the board when it comes to definitions, so. Um and the affordable housing, when this came up in a, and there's, they're releasing some new grant funds available for um. Trying to develop affordable housing rules and things of that nature. And one of the questions from the panel was, is well, what is affordable housing and who's going to define that? And that the answer pretty much was, it's it's in works. Well, it's been in the works for a long time. Uh so.
That's, thank you. That's, I think that's about as close you're going to get is that. The moving target, because we'd have developers come here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and ask about it, you know, and they're they're, they don't know.
Yeah, the thing is, is that there's so much money out there right now for affordable housing. We haven't, we haven't. Been like trying to woo anybody in here to do affordable housing. We've been very fortunate that we've got a couple affordable housing projects here. Uh but we haven't done much to make that happen. And I think when you try to make it happen, it doesn't happen. We tried to make it happen when I was in talent for ten years. And 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 it just, it doesn't.
No.
Doesn't happen unless it happens naturally. And there has to be a reason why people want to do that. So I I think we're in a good position as far as affordable housing goes and, you know.
So 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 to follow up on that, so in other words, like I've seen projects. Well, specific on talent, but where a developer comes in. And he's got this project, this is what he wants to do, it looks like this, it's nice housing, it's this. This income can afford this housing, but there was no affordable element of it. So. Who mandates that you have a project? It's your money, it's your putting it on the table. Uh skin in the game and somebody's going to mandate that you have to have an element of that?
So there used to be rules around what what jurisdictions could require for affordable housing and you had to adopt these. Uh model rules from the from the state in order to enact. Um certain requirements for affordable housing and projects. And I think that. Haven't seen that for a while, so I think it's probably changed pretty dramatically in the last five years as far as, you know. Everything, everything, again, going back to my point before, everything that's affordable housing generally gets a break on something. Um and 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 it's to incentivize it to to be done. And I and and at some point it will be done, but then you have to look at the other, the other unintended consequence.
Up in the Portland area, I'm not sure if Portland itself or Willamette, the the county, if you build more than twenty apartment units. Thirty percent have to go to affordable apartments.
Right.
The the dwellers, so so a lot of developers up there said, screw that, I'm just going to build nineteen.
Right.
And demand of affordable house because you're trying to push it. It doesn't come organically. It actually hurt the affordable housing market up there. It didn't help. But up there, more than twenty, thirty percent have to be allocated towards. Low income people, which pushed up the cost for those who are not low income.
Yeah.
Where that, where that, who put that percentage in? I mean, was that?
That was, that was from the state and it's very specific.
Did that?
Yes, and I can't remember, there's a term for it, I can't remember. It's not necessarily important, but. To, yes, you are correct, but to your point, on the flip side of that, when we make developers do. Those things that are outside of that particular rule, then this is a violation of, you know, there's a violation of state law. And uh but cities have leverage, right? When people want to do zone changes to do things, the city. Government has to approve a zone change. And so the city government doesn't. Have to approve it either. The city government can sit on it because legislative applications don't have a timeline because the city has a, the ability to. Zone its city how it wants to zone it. So there's a lot of nuances to it, but I mean, we don't need to get into those right now.
Yeah.
Um but there are, there are a lot of.
Conversation.
There's a lot of conflicting statutes, even. Even at the state level that you have to really read to understand. It's like, well, we were told to do this, but now we have to do this. But if we do this, we can't do that. Um and so it is a lot for us to navigate. And it's a lot for small communities to navigate because it does have, it. Can have a major impact on its economic development, its growth. We're fortunate here that we have a pretty good economic base. Um but smaller towns that don't and maybe like Shady Cove or. Uh Gold Hill, you know, areas like that that don't have the commerce that we have, could probably struggle mightily with this type of stuff. Uh so the most important ones on this list, uh citizen involvement, land use planning. And we don't really deal with goal three and four, although we did with the urban growth boundary expansion, but we won't anymore. Natural resources, sometimes most of the urban areas intended to be, is intended to be built in. And so we still do look at things like wetlands and environmental quality and things like that. Um that's goal five and six. Uh areas subject to natural hazards changed a lot over time, food wildfires now. Uh but mostly Cascadia earthquake events, uh flooding, things of that nature. Recreational needs, we don't really do much with, but goal nine and goal ten, um goal nine, ten. Eleven to some point, twelve and fourteen are probably the ones that we deal with the most. Economic development helps us determine how much uh how much commercial land we need. And generally, we need a twenty year supply of land. In order to be compliant with state rules. Same thing is true with housing. You generally have to uh do an analysis to figure out where you, you know, how much housing you're missing, what you need for the future. And if you want to grow, this is where the urban growth boundary and the rules uh kind of restricted cities from just. You know, growing, you know, exponentially without any reason. Uh this kind of put the clamps on the ability for them, you had to demonstrate that you needed that housing for the next twenty years or that. Commercial land for the next twenty years.
So this to make sure I understand, when you said that commercial land, you mean you need twenty. Years, that space that's currently on you, not used for commercial purposes and you're.
Vacant or. Right, and and it's more complicated than that because it's it's vacant lands, but it's partially vacant, partially developed lands. You have to include those. Or redevelopable lands. If you have a house, single family house on a five acre commercial parcel, that's a redevelopable parcel. It's not considered committed to commercial development. So. You generally pay an economist or economic firm to do that work and there's a lot of analysis that goes into that. Ours, if you look at a comprehensive plan, it's the economic opportunities analysis. Um that's what we did in, I believe, two thousand sixteen, maybe seventeen, um to determine. What land we needed for commercial. Uh and the same thing was done for housing at that same time. Housing is is a. Little more complicated, uh because it looks at housing types, it looks at um populations, it looks at incomes. To to try to help you determine how much affordable housing you need, how much single family housing you need, how much uh. Apartment housing you need, uh do you need more detached or do you need more attached housing, things of that nature, so.
That that report goes to the state then?
Uh so it's adopted by this, I I mean, the state does usually participates in the process. I mean, you're usually paying. A a contractor from D L C D to uh to do that work through a grant. It's pretty expensive work, so. It's pretty well guided through a public process and through D L C D's process. So by the time you get to the end. Of that analysis anyway, it's pretty well refined to D L C D's uh standards and then. It's generally adopted into your comprehensive plan or uh into elements of your comprehensive plan. And this, the the most frequently updated one, I'd probably say, is the transportation system plan. And um that's just because transportation needs change. Uh we're we're looking at more multimodal transportation. How do we get more sidewalks in? What do we? Uh how do we make it more pedestrian friendly, those types of things? Um we don't have a lot of of area that's expanding that we're going to have new road networks. I say that, but page five will have some, but for the most part, our city as a whole isn't like Medford with. You know, hundreds of acres of vacant lands that will become subdivisions that will have collector roads and, you know, major impact on other developments. We don't. Really have that.
Always got tangled up a little bit with L C D C that they. It's not even a state organization, it's just a.
L L C D C?
Yeah.
Um it used to be, it used to just be elected people from different areas. I mean, you could apply to be. Elected to be on the board, on the else, on the commission. Uh I'm not sure exactly how it works now or what they're. They're they're just oversight of the Department of Land Conservation and Development, so.
It will be fired.
What's that?
It should all be fired.
Yeah. So uh yeah, a little bit more on comprehensive planning. Uh again, every city has to adopt them. Uh and it's the controlling document for all land use decisions. So. Whenever we make a comprehensive plan change, or excuse me, a zoning code amendment, um you'll notice in that, in the last set of. Uh zoning code amendments, I think to you all, there was a a document called findings, findings of fact. Um the findings of fact had uh various elements of the comprehensive plan in there showing that what we were doing. Was consistent with the comprehensive plan. If you can't demonstrate that your zoning code amendment is is consistent with your comprehensive plan. You either need to change your comprehensive plan to make it consistent or you don't change your zoning code. Um and I would say for the most part, our comprehensive plan is pretty well updated. The park element is going to be updated here soon. Um transportation element was updated, you know, nine years ago. Uh the housing and economy elements were updated, the urbanization element, all of those were updated recently. Where where we struggle a little bit is with our public facilities, hasn't been, hasn't been readopted since nineteen ninety six. Um and um we we do have a capital improvement plan that we will look at on a five year basis and kind of just. Kind of fix ourselves, uh you know, up over the course of a five year period. Uh but the element itself hasn't been updated and needs to be, uh needs to be made uh more. Uh, but the element itself hasn't been updated and needs to be, uh, needs to be made, uh, more consistent with. The current goals of the city. Uh, LCD, this is more on LCDC, I got that slide out of order a little bit. Um. The amendments that we do, um, like I said, we go through a process. We, we noticed the land, uh, Department of Land Conservation and Development. And then when it's all said and done, and we've gone through the entire process, they will acknowledge it. Um, it's a post acknowledgement amendment. Um, which means that after the, the city has adopted it, the, the state comes back and says, okay, city. Yes, this is in compliance with, you know, the rules that we're aware of and your city has made this change. Here you can. Uh, amend your code.
So the, wait, the LCDC has to. Have we, like, every city's?
So the Department of Land Conservation and Development will oversee. Every zoning code amendment and every comprehensive plan amendment. Now. They don't have much oversight to say, no, city, you can't do that unless you're in violation of state law.
Right. They, they can bastards sometimes.
Can we back up? Show them.
Sarah's dog, you're just. Those, um, they do have a lot of control.
They do.
They do. And, but what I will say in my experience, and I've been doing this. For about fifteen years at the city level, maybe a little, a little bit longer than that. I, I really, there are regional reps and we, we have a regional rep and. There have been times where, where we have sparred.
No.
Uh, and we agree to disagree and we move on and there's, there's no challenge at the state level. Where, what I would say would be a challenge, an example of a challenge is say we tried to update it. We just updated our transportation system plan on our own. We didn't go through a grant. We just paid a consultant to update it and we, we didn't address any of the transportation planning rules and we said. Forget to state, we're not going to deal with climate friendly and equitable cities. We're just going to adopt the plan that we want. Um, they would not acknowledge it and it wouldn't formally be accepted and couldn't be used. Um, if we tried to use it and somebody appealed us, it would not have been. Accepted by the state and couldn't be used by the city. But with that said, I, I don't know that I've seen that happen. Uh, I, it probably happens up north all the time or in smaller cities with more controversial issues, but. Down here, I have never experienced the. We're going to appeal this and, and, and not allow you to go through this, this post acknowledgement.
Does that create a major bottleneck in terms of timing?
Well.
A lot of weeds for.
It's, it's, it seems a little, it seems a little out of order, a little bit, because the city is all done with its final decision. And DLCD has twenty business days to peel it, basically. So after the city has gone through its entire process. Uh, it has twenty days to appeal it, but our ordinances are effective in thirty days. So there's a very short window, you know. It, again, I haven't seen this happen. I, I have had the, the, uh. I have had to negotiate, you know, with DLCD on, on different things, especially, um. In the southern part of the valley, uh, and we know whether that, whether that was. Whether that was with that particular council wanting to do things that were outside the state rules, or whether that was the state. Saying that we were and us not agreeing with them. Uh. But I haven't seen any, I haven't seen any of my work or any, any local work around here. Flat overturned by DLCD. I think it'd go through legal challenges first.
Zach is being very kind and.
Well, I have to say, it's, you know, it's.
I have a good relief. They exist. I really don't.
We have a good working relationship with our DLCD rep. It hasn't always been that way. Um. And again, we, we agree to disagree on, on a lot of items. Uh, and again, this is, this regional rep has, you know, a planning background and has his own. Personal ideas and has the state's warped ideas in some, in some sense. And, you know, his job is to see this, you know, see that cities implement that. Um. But as we could see with the last code amendments that we did. There were things in the code amendment that had we not read through or had we not had public comment on and. You know, it's just as much my fault as anybody else's, but, you know. Some of the mandates that were in our code weren't required by statute. They were just. Merely strong suggestions that got put in there. And this is where, this is where. The state organizations get themselves in a little bit of trouble, in my opinion, is, is that people lose trust. And not that I lost trust in this process, but I did have to question. You know, why, why would you require us to mandate, you know. Two EV chargers to be in a parking lot when the code says, or when the state model code doesn't even say that. Model code says that you have to put EV conduit in. It's, it's a drastic difference. Uh, and so. But I'd say for more often than not, they're, they're a good resource. I'll just leave it at that.
Should and must. Important words.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Oh, I mean, a should versus a must.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a big difference.
Huge difference. Thank you.
Yep. All right. So types of regulations to get into the, we're, we're past the long range stuff now and all the history. Uh, but what's important to you here from a city level when people ask you, why? Why did that land use action not come to the planning commission? Or why does somebody able to build their house and I didn't get an opportunity to say anything? So there are different types of zoning regulations. There's the, the zoning code. There's the subdivision regulations and then there's non regulatory tools such as. Uh, incentive programs or capital improvement plans, those types of plans that. Implement the comprehensive plan, subdivision being, uh. Divisions of land that are greater than three properties and partitions being, um. Less than, uh, three or less zoning, meaning residential and commercial development or industrial development, uh. With specific area planning requirements, specific permitted uses and specific conditional uses. And, and other things such as standards and lot sizes and setbacks. Then on a broad, yeah.
The slide on the, um, urban growth boundaries.
Yes.
Maybe I just didn't look up. Um, I just want to make sure I understand the actual. So it's like the community neighborhood gets annexed into the city.
It's still.
That overlap with an urban growth boundary.
So, so the urban growth boundary is the outer boundary of the areas of the city's area in which it can grow. Annexations happen, can happen within that urban growth boundary through a simple application to annex or applica.
Does the area have to be in the urban to be able to be annexed?
Yes, and it has to be adjacent to an already annexed property. Uh, there are some exceptions. I mean, we, we had some exceptions in our last annexation. We used the railroad tracks as a. As a way to connect properties together to create islands. And then there's a bunch of. Other enclave annexation requirements that are allowances that allow you to. Kind of spot annexed properties. Uh, it doesn't happen a lot. It did happen with our last one because we did. More of this enclave's annexation to try to get properties that we knew were, would volunteer to come in. And then when those came in, we could take those ones and now we have adjacent properties in which we could say. You, you all don't have a choice. We're annexing you in. Uh.
It's like PH three.
It's just like.
So PH, PH three was part of our growth boundary like. Then we get the annex them in. Then the wide area is the urban reserve, right?
No, so, so the PH three was the urban reserve. Then we did an urban growth boundary expansion into the urban reserve. So we expanded our urban growth boundary. We expanded our outer boundary. Of the city into PH three. And then. Once it's in the urban growth boundary, then you can annex properties and through a simple process. The, the process of a UGB amendment is super complicated. This is where you have to demonstrate. That you have, uh, enough land to accommodate growth for twenty years, whether it's for residential, commercial or industrial land. So, but when you're, when you're already in the UGB, you don't have to demonstrate that need. It's already been demonstrated by the fact that you're in the UGB. Yeah. And but the most important thing is, is that you have to have a twenty year supply line. And I, I think that's going to start changing over time. It's, it's super difficult to project a twenty year. And with the regional planning, you had, we had to project a fifty year growth, uh, period and where these areas could grow. So. It, it's, it's very far fetched. Things change a lot in twenty years, or you have some natural disaster happen that. That changes your landscape, you know, in a different reason. And, and then you're totally not in compliance. Uh, okay, so we did that one. Uh, other types of land use decisions. This is important for. You all to understand wh- what you get to have. Uh, the ability to, to work through. So you, there are, there are four legislative quasi judicial. Administrative and ministerial. Ministerial ones are your routine, over the counter, no discretion, fence permit. This fence six feet tall, is it, you know, is your house? You know, building permits, another, uh, example of a ministerial permit, is it five feet from the property line? Is it less than thirty five feet tall? Does it have a driveway? Uh, you know, those types of things. If you can, if you can check the box. Yes or no, it's going to be a ministerial decision. Then you have the administrative decisions that, that require a little bit more discretion. Um, and also requires a notice of application. And so you'll see these applications on the city's website under the. What's going on in my neighborhood, uh, link for the, the. Uh, online map. And basically there, there might be a pin on the map that says this person submitted an application for. Uh, an administrative decision. So let's say, uh. What's a good example? Uh, of the foodery is a good example. Uh, the foodery didn't come to the planning commission. It was an administrative decision because. The code says these are the discretionary things that you have to take into consideration. We had to notice property owners within a certain distance and that's. Outlined in our code. Um, there's a minimum outlined in the, in the state's, uh. Uh, revised statutes, but ours is pretty similar to that. We noticed them. We make a discretionary decision. We send a notice of decision to those property owners that may be impacted. And they have the opportunity to appeal the city's decision to you all, the planning commission. Uh, if, if for some reason they don't like the decision or even the applicant doesn't like. The conditions, maybe, maybe they got an approval, but they don't like the conditions. Or they got denied and they, they feel like we were factually wrong and they want to appeal to you. That elevates their administrative review to a quasi judicial decision, which comes to the planning commission. So planning commission might hear a quasi judicial appeal. Or you might just hear a quasi judicial application, which could be something like the Taco Bell, which. Is a conditional use permit, required planning commission authorization, same with Starbucks, um. And those required, uh, planning commission review because they're specifically a conditional use permit because of the drive through facility in this case. And then you have the legislative applications that are, uh. Really the planning commission's recommendation to the city council, which you all just did at your last planning commission meeting. Where you recommended approval of the zoning code amendment. That's a legislative action that is elevated to. Uh, the city council for a final decision. So those are the four types. Uh, ministerial, you don't see, administrative, you don't typically see. Uh, unless it comes to you on appeal. We have tried to do quarterly reports and I'm going to try to do that more, more frequently now that we're a little bit caught up. Where we can tell you how many administrative applications we reviewed and what we reviewed. Uh, but I would encourage you all to go on the website and look at the online map. Because the online map does have the pens of, uh, applications, the, the points of applications that have been made in the last year or two. I think we go back two years. Um, and you can just click on that and it takes you right to the public record and you can see everything. So if you wanted to see what had recently happened, you can go click around on that and it drops you right everywhere you need to go. Uh, land use decisions, uh. Must be based on adopted criteria or substantial evidence. So. Sometimes you'll see people submit applications to us and they, um. They, they don't get past the completeness part, right? They submit us the application form. And they submit a map that they hand drew and said, this is what I want to build. And we go back and we go, okay, well, you haven't addressed the relative criteria. You haven't, you know, you haven't told us how you meet them. Uh, your map's not to scale, uh, all of these things. We look at before we even, before we even deem an application complete. Now, the city does not have the ability to not accept an application. If somebody comes in and says, this is what I want to submit. We have to take the application and we'll deem it incomplete. And then they have a hundred and eighty days to either provide us the information. Or tell us they're not going to provide us the information in which their application's likely going to be denied. So. Their incomplete letter that they get says that, it says, you know, we encourage you to. Submit this information so we can make a good decision here, but if you choose not to, we may not have a choice but to deny. Um, so they get the incomplete letter, uh, and then they get their complete letter. And then once they get the complete letter, um. Not sure if I have a slide on that. Uh. Might be getting ahead of myself here. I'll talk about that in a second. Um, conditional, uh, so the findings that they provide to the narrative that they provide. Has to address the criteria and sometimes that can be addressed in a map. And sometimes it can be addressed in text. Sometimes it requires both. Sometimes they might have a site plan map that says my garbage facility is here. And I didn't draw the elevations yet, but I'm going to have this. And then we can come back and say, okay, well, fair enough, we'll, we'll condition that. And you have to provide us. Prior to issuing permits, you have to provide us design of your garbage enclosure. Most common one that we see that people don't do right off the bat is lighting. Our lighting code is super complicated and needs to probably be refined and, and made much easier. Uh, but is the one that people have to come back to, um, and hire a lighting person to do all of their work. So. Generally creates a good project, but, uh, it's a lot of work. Uh, the conditions of approval must be rational, um, and proportional to the project's end time. This is important because a lot of times people will say, well, you let that subdivision be built right there, but you didn't make them put, you know. Sidewalks in on this portion of the street or, uh, that's, that's a bad example. Um. I'm going to use it though. So let's say we want them to put in five hundred thousand dollars worth of sidewalk. Um, and their project is five hundred thousand dollar project. Well, we can probably presume that what we're asking them to do, even though we're probably allowed to, is not roughly, roughly proportional to the project that they have. And we can find ourselves in a legal suit if we're not proportional to what their ask is. And, and we've, we've straddle a fine line on that one sometimes because the code does give us the ability to. Mandate certain things get done. Uh, and sometimes we can condition them, sometimes we defer them. Uh, areas that are, uh, somebody will come in and do an apartment complex and there's no sidewalk in the front. Of their project, but there's no sidewalk on any portion of the street. We would defer the improvements of the sidewalks to a time where we put the sidewalks in. That's proportional. Now, if we told them we needed them to hire an engineer and set the grade of the entire street. All of like second street, for example, that's not roughly proportional to somebody building a fourplex. So we, we walk the fine line there. Um, and, and, and I have fortunately not been in any issues where we've ever had been called out on a, on a proportionality issue because. Those generally don't go to the planning commission or the council. They generally go to the circle court. Ministerial decisions, I talked about that. Um, and it's, I'm not going to belabor that, but it's more like sign permits and final plats and partitions. Again, things that you can just check yes or no. Skip the administrative decisions there. Uh, quasi judicial decisions, you are all familiar with those, but. Generally where these fall, zone changes for specific properties, those are quasi judicial and legislative. Because the planning commission can make a recommendation on the zone change. Council has to make the, the final decision on it, but a property owner that wants to come in and make a. Zone change to their property, that makes it quasi judicial because it's not city making a recommended change. They have to be able to have their due process. Legislative decisions, we talked about those, but again, code revisions, area wide changes to, or overlay districts or adoption of zoning ordinances. Or changes in the comprehensive plan map or, um, or, or zoning map. And you'll see with the park element, uh, park master plan coming up will probably make a recommendation to change a couple of pieces of land that were zoned commercial. And you'll see with the park element, Parkmaster Plan coming up will probably make a recommendation to change a couple of pieces of land that were zoned commercial. Specifically this building here and the wetlands behind it to parkland instead of commercial land. And there's a number of reasons why to do that. Mostly we can use park system development charges to create the area. If we change zoning and and apply like pedestrian paths in those areas, sometimes those can be covered by street STCs. So there's 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 a reason to to have things zoned specifically and to call them as such. Appeals and enforcement, the cities are locally responsible for appeals. So as I said, if I make a decision administratively, if he doesn't like it, they can deal it to the planning commission. If they don't like your decision, then they appeal it to the city council. And from the city council, that's the final decision of the city and it goes to the land use port of appeals. If somebody chooses to do so. Roles and responsibilities, we're almost done, we only have six slides. Roles and responsibilities, this is important too. And you all probably know all of this, but I'm I'm going to skip through that. For the planning staff, we administer the process, we advise the commissions, we educate the public. And unfortunately, we have to enforce the rules. So it makes us the good guy, it makes us the bad guy, sometimes. Both at the same time, it just depends on, you can never make anybody happy, right? If somebody's mad, somebody's happy and vice versa. The governing body represents the constituents.
Can I go back one step?
One slide?
Put not the two planning staff.
Oh, yes.
Before we go to the city council. So you guys, I think, have a theory that you're trying to get to yes with customers.
Yeah.
I call customers, so when people come to the application, your goal is to get to yes. And
That is my direction to my staff.
Yes, help them along the way.
And I think the council generally agrees with that.
Yeah.
I will say that's not the same in every jurisdiction. There are some jurisdictions that that choose to say no and make you find a way to yes, and I don't believe that's the appropriate way to to.
It's very important distinction.
Yeah.
To be planning friendly like we are, very important.
Yeah, and and it comes, it comes at a at a risk, right? Because no good deed goes unpunished, and we've had a few of those happen where we've I wouldn't say bent over backwards, but we we acknowledged ways that people were interpreting the rules and said, okay, that sounds good. And then it doesn't work out for some reason, or they don't. It becomes a constant battle with that person to do what it was that they agreed to do. So I will say I have learned the art of writing conditions. Because you can really jam someone up pretty quickly and their argument, if you're trying to get to yes and it's tough, you can say yes and you can condition. You know, that application like as much as you can, that's proportional to the project. And it's hard for them to come back to the planning commission and say, well, we don't like this condition. And that's where the discretion comes in, right? You have the ability as a panel to say well, yeah, that sounds reasonable, or no, we think staff erred and and we should do that, so, but yes. We do try to do yes, and again, I will say probably half of the communities around here are like that and half are the other way. But it's all, it's all at the direction of the council. If I started saying yes to everything and the council didn't want to see development, I probably wouldn't have a job. And and because I'm interpreting the policy and and then that policy changes. So.
Well, that's sweet to be important to the strategic planning and the values and you know, overall, which plan is on what's the the vision and what are the kind of goals for the community because then you can, I guess, if I'm interpreting that correctly, you can rely on those that it may meet condition A to your C, but it really is not consistent with the overall goal that the community is trying to accomplish, and that gives you more of a justification to maybe say no with something that is legal, but doesn't meet the overall intent.
Wow, yeah, I would say, yeah, so what you'll see, if you ever look at a council agenda report, you'll see the current goals. You'll see like council goals, right? And what we do now is we take, and I think Joe kind of said this a little bit when when he met with you all, but we take the existing strategic plan and when we write a staff report, we try to tie it to the strategic plan to say how it supports what the council wants to do. We can use a strategic plan too if it said, hey, you need to update your public facilities in your area to be more wildfire resilient, right? Well, that gives me a green light in my mind to you know, work to adopt a new public facilities element. And not have to worry about the council saying, no, that wasn't what we wanted to do. Because the strategic plan said this is what we want to do. So if you think about the higher hierarchy of documents. Even though the strategic plan is going to be adopted by the council and not recognized by the state, it is kind of the the vision, if you will, of what the council wants to do. And we implement that vision through the comprehensive plan, or they implement it through policy changes that they can do that don't require those types of amendments, so. And as Joe said, you know, there were a lot of number of things that there were a number of things that we got done in this existing strategic plan. And it just out, it's just outlived its useful life, there's there's not a lot left in there that we can tie things back to. And 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 do it with a straight face anymore, right? We need, we need a new vision and we need to be able to to explain that, but yes, you can. I I wouldn't ever use a strategic plan to make a land use decision because I would, I would, I would rely solely on the zoning code. If there was a, if there was some confusion in the zoning code or I need to interpret it something and I was trying to apply some level of discretion, I would go back to the comprehensive plan to read what say the purpose of the the city center zone was, say there was a use that somebody wanted to have. It wasn't in the use table, I'm trying to interpret whether the use and I can't make that determination from the zoning code. Then I would go to the comprehensive plan and say, okay. Tell me about this zone and what it means and and then I would probably refer back to that in my findings to say zoning code says this, it's unclear, but the comprehensive plan says that. I wouldn't probably do that with a strategic plan because it's not an adopted land use document.
So the comp plan is used to set the priorities to guide to guide other being land development codes and zoning ordinances.
Right.
I was, what I was suggesting, kind of misuse of the the strategic plan and the the cop plan.
She's she's correct, so when it comes to the planning process, it's pretty cut and dry. Either the application meets the criteria, meets what's in the land development code, so what what we're commissioned to do is just review applications and what he does is just looks at the land development code, correct or wrong. And either the application meets the land development code or not, regardless of what our strategic plan is, regardless of
Right.
Compromised plan is, so it just follows down to to the code. And when we have somebody come in and they're putting an application in here, they got, they have to meet the land development code, and when they're speaking to their application, and when you see the application, they're always citing the code, this, 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 we meet this, 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 this. And the and the and our administrative staff says, yes, we agree, they meet that, they meet that, they meet that, they meet that, they meet all the criteria. And we're going to recommend that the commission approve the application. And sometimes, you know, there's a dispute.
And obviously, sometimes you need clarification. So I do this all the time when I, when I do, when I write a private application. It's like if I want to, if I want to explain why I meet this standard. Because I think that there's going to be a hang up somewhere. Or there's just a little bit of, could be yes, could be no, but I really want to explain it in more detail. I I might go to the comprehensive plan. And say, you know, the comp plan says this, but on a general rule. Your land development code should be compliant with your comprehensive plan. So it should, it should be implementing what your comp plan wants the city to do. Problem is, is is that you have elements that are outdated by thirty years. A lot of them and some that are outdated by nine years now, so. Sometime, and this is why we go and change, we try to change those frequently. Make sure that we're
Well, your comp, isn't the comp plan, I mean, that's state driven, correct? I mean, they want, they want percentages of industrial, they want, they want, you know, based on, I'm reading it here, is that it's 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 state goals, in other words, like, in other words, like these divided lands, in other words, like the helicopter property was industrial land that never came about, but we met comp, the comp plan, the state, the city made, met the comp plan to have that industrial property and they had this and this and this. Where strategy and goals are are more of a city thing. Am I correct?
Correct.
I mean, you got two different, we're talking about two different things.
Yes, strategic plan is what the city wants to do, and it may not involve all land use, it could be we, we want downtown streetlights or we want to repair all of our weapons, city. I mean, the those are, those are things that they want to have done. But we can't use that necessarily. Now, if I wanted to do a comprehensive plan amendment. And I needed some reason to convince the council that we should be doing that, then I would go to their their goals and say, this is how you accomplish that. But what I, but even the comprehensive plan has guiding principles that you have to be consistent with, so you have to when we do a comprehensive plan amendment. So when you guys see the the park element come to you after the park master plan is adopted. Then I have to demonstrate compliance for goal five, goal six of the Oregon State Planning Goals, goal third, goal seven, I think is recreational.
Three, well.
Three of the point.
Goal eight, yeah.
Well, it's, in other words, it's periodically reviewed by DLC, DC, state state, state Department of Conservation. It's it, to me, the comprehensive plan is totally state driven. It's the way I'm reading this.
But it's not, because so, so we'll take the park master plan that's going to go to the council. Now, the park master plan didn't come to the planning commission, it went to the Parks and Recreation Commission. The council will adopt the park master plan. And then once the council adopts the park master plan, I'm going to take what was recommended in the park master plan and put that into a park element that the planning commission can review to demonstrate compliance with, so this is a park element in the comprehensive plan. Has to meet our park master plan, but it also has to meet goal eight of the Oregon State Planning Goals. So you are correct in the sense that there is some state influence on it, but if we have a master plan, we're going to take the goals and visions of the community and put those into the comprehensive plan and then develop implementation steps and processes in which to get those adopted. So, and yes, it has to be acknowledged by the state. And really what the state's looking for is, did you meet goal eight, did you meet goal five, did you meet goal six, you know, all of those things.
So everybody shaking hands, basically.
Yeah, pretty much. Next, governing body of the city council, planning commission. And then the chair is, you know, his, for her task is to conduct meetings, diffuse hostility. Ensure participation and lead us to a conclusion. We're not quite to the conclusion yet because I still have five slides, but we're close. We talked about public hearings and citizen involvement a little bit and the purpose of them. Of course, you know, goal one asks for citizen involvement. Goal two talks about land use planning, which includes public hearing process. This is changing. But my guess is there always will be some form of citizen involvement in in something that we do and to some extent, some of it should be more than others. Now, our transportation system plan is a good example. We were trying to do some transportation planning. We got no interest from the community because it's boring, nobody wants to do transportation planning. It works fine, we don't live in New York City, nobody gets in traffic jams, you know, minor things. Nobody wants to know about it. Parks master planning, on the other hand, you end up with four hundred surveys out of, you know, twenty four hundred people, you know, that you were, that you were seeking, and so and I think you have to play that carefully. What Joe's doing right now over there with the strategic plan is is good, we we only have so much. We only have so much citizen, what am I, what am I looking for? Investment, right? Citizens only invest so much time and you know, we have to be wise in how we ask them to come and participate. We can continue to ask them all the time, but the expectation is going to be, you know, depending on what it is, you might get less involvement.
I think that that this vision and everything, yeah, citizens involved, but also we also need the investors to be involved. I think that's some of the, some of these visions are pretty we don't know, we haven't seen them yet. But I would think they're pretty broad based, but I think to have investors wanting to be involved helps take the cost off the city and 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 partnerships and 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 things like that, and with the transportation plan. Obviously, RVTD needs needed to be involved. I mean, that's, they're they're very much part of it. And I didn't hear much of it, but they are a part of it, they are, I I guess it's bringing partners together is what I'm I'm saying to make this vision.
And it's tough, I mean, we pay participants to be in the CAC in this last set of code amendments we did, we paid them eighty dollars to participate. Now, that doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're getting paid for public participation and you still can't get people to come. It's challenge, and we did, we reached out to stakeholders and some participated and some said we'll participate and then chose not to, and the eighty dollars wasn't enough, right? So.
But stakeholders who took, we participate a lot, they invested economic interest.
Right, and that's where it falls, and that's where Paul came in with with his involvement, he was in the CAC, he's the business owner, he's a good example of a stakeholder that you're talking about. But it is a challenge.
Yeah, he has his development, he was involved for years with regards to his his development. And like Mike Mahar, NHL news and Mike McCarrow for PH five. So the Arrowhead Ranch area, those guys are super involved with what's going on, that's a big part of our city's planning.
Yeah.
So they are, they are.
Absolutely. And they, and they I'm saying the partnership, that's what I'm saying, you know, these are, these are people that want to be involved because obviously it's like, there's money to be made and it's and it's good for the city. And
Sometimes your strategic vision, hey, we want large developers come into Phoenix and help develop PH five or PH three.
Whatever it is, whatever these goals, these strategic goals, we need, we're going to need these partners.
And say that they're renewal, they can say, put the word out, hey, we want people to help develop land right over here. And once you put that word out through a strategic vision and the city council put the word out, then they get involved if they have an economic
And we will as well when we, when we start doing concept planning for the park, for example, in PH five. When we start planning what that park is going to look like over there, they will have a regional park over there, it'll be part of their development. Part of the developers that build over there, their development, and we want them to be involved because they're going to build it.
Yeah.
And that's their responsibility, so we want to share their vision, but we we need to accomplish ours as well.
Correct.
All right, last three, ethics and fairness. Skip this. Serve, serve the public interest with integrity and transparency.
And is this on the national level?
To avoid conflict of interest and maintain confidentiality. Which you guys don't have to worry about the confidentiality as much, conflict of interest you do because people do come and and want to engage with planning commission because sometimes they they do want to do in the rounds, and I'm not using yours as an example, but but they, but they do all the time where they will just they don't like the answer that staff gives, so they go right to the council and not realizing that it's going to come to the planning commission. And then ultimately get the council on appeal, so treat all proceedings fairly and provide clear, timely information, we try to do that. Now that we have good staff and and we're caught up on things, it's easier to do that. And then follow the American Planning Association's Code of Ethics. You can look that up, but it it's generally speaking, you know, being fair. And just and making ethical, ethical decisions.
I think touch base on something that would keep people out of trouble. I I think to touch base on something that would keep people out of trouble on the planning commission. And sometimes you'll hear, have you had any ex parte contact? And what what they mean by that is someone, let's say Taco Bell developer is having a problem with. Um, with our administration and they happen to contact Sarah. Say, I'm with Taco Bell, I'd like to talk to you about our, 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 our plan. And they're an applicant, they're going to come to us and they're going to ask for a pool or something. You can't talk to them.
No.
You just can't because you're going to make a decision. That's what they call an ex parte contact. So you're, you're talking to someone who's going to come here and be an applicant. You got to tell them, hey, I can't talk to you, period. So.
So I will say that with one clarification, sometimes you don't get that, right? Somebody emails you. And that's still an ex parte contact as well. And you don't have the choice to say no. But what you would do in that situation is you would declare the ex parte contact and say that it has no. Uh, built, it's not biasing my decision in in any way. Yeah, but you want to avoid those as much as possible. So.
Absolutely.
Uh, if if somebody comes to you and says, hey, I'd like to to meet with you about this. Uh, and I'm meeting all the planning commissioners, well, the red flags go up and and. Should kindly tell them no and. Can just go from there.
I mean, yeah. You're not.
Well, and 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 I I I use Sarah's example. I use Sarah's example because there, there's a current application that's coming in and she was asked to go do a site visit.
No, I actually reached that.
Or or reached out to do that, okay. And 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 they thankfully, you know, they understood, um, mostly because I think. And not to get into the weeds too much, but they, they had had a conversation, an ex parte conversation with the mayor. And the mayor said, no, you can't have that conversation with me. And so then when Sarah asked if they could, she could do a, uh. You know, site visit with them, they said, um, probably not. And then, and then we had the conversation and and all is well. But I think if if you run into those situations. It, especially if we have like a, like a form issue tonight, right? Let's say we have a public hearing tonight. That that public hearing was to happen and she had to, you know, she couldn't. Be unbiased because of what she saw for some reason. Then we all of a sudden don't have a forum for our public hearing. So it 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 just puts us. As a commission in a, in a bind if we have, especially if we're late on getting the application done and we're running into a. A timeline issue. We didn't talk about statutory timeline very often or very much. I don't think we talked about it at all, actually. We have one hundred and twenty days to make a decision from the date the application is deemed complete. That's from beginning to end. So if we don't, if we're not Johnny on the spot and putting our notices out and making this thing go through the process as quickly as possible. Then we can get into a time crunch. And if we get to the end of our hundred and twenty days and the city council hasn't made a final decision and somebody appeals. Then it's basically a writ of mandamus. They take us to circuit court, they get their decision. And they probably get an approval outside of what we may have denied. So. Uh, so we just have to be careful about all of that. We have, and we have to be timely and and be smart about. What we're doing, what we're asking for, how much grief we're putting people through as, as they would say, um. Uh, and 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 we hear it too because I I get emails from the council saying, why are we doing this to these people? And it's like, well, did you hear the whole story? And then you explain it and it's like, oh, okay, that makes sense. Uh, last, I'm going to skip to conflict resolution mediation, but this is, this is if we can't as a board, um. Reduce tensions and we haven't had that problem. Monitoring amendments and appeals, um. Deals with land use decisions, we talked about that, going away in support of appeals and the planning commission officials have a public. Officials immunity when acting, um, in their official capacity in public meetings. So. You you you're not going to be sued if you make a decision. Um, this is what this is getting at really is, is that if you make a decision on approving. Taco, obviously Taco Bell because it's already approved, uh, approving Taco Bell and. Taco Bell gets built and gosh, you approved it and somebody got hurt in the drive through. You you you're not going to be liable. Uh, and I, and what this doesn't say either is, is that when making regulations to. You. This comes up a lot. Because people think that they might have a direct conflict of interest if, let's say, you are going to build an ADU. And we're developing ADU regulations. And you're wanting to build one. You haven't built one yet, but you want to build one. Or you might like to build a subdivision in the future. Right? You're a recommending body. And your job is to help write the regulations to propose to the council. Just because you want to do something like that. There's no way for you to avoid it. You have to live in the city. To be on the planning commission, but you're also tasked with writing regulations, which may. You know, come to you and something. Now, if you're a big developer and you, you know, you're sitting on the planning commission and you. You know, you know, you're going to buy. That piece of land and build a subdivision. And we're talking about subdivision rules, it's probably good for you to come out and say, you know, I don't have any direct conflict, but. You know, I I did just purchase this piece of property with the idea of building a subdivision. So. For what it's worth. I'm gonna, you know, I'm going to participate. And you're only making a recommendation, it's, it's not a big deal. Now, if you came to. If you came to me and said, hey, into the chair and said, hey, I want to rewrite the subdivision rules so that I can get. Fifty lots per, you know, ten acres instead of, you know, twenty five lots. I think we should make some code amendments. Yeah, clearly a different, a different story. But you as a board or a commissioner tasked with writing the regulations or recommending the regulations of all of the city. You know, through the land development code. And so you don't have any way to exit that, that ramp really. Uh, unless you have a very direct. Conflict of interest that could, could bias your decision and. And you don't really have to worry about it anyway because you have a board of seven. You just need to make sure you make it clear. Of, you know, yeah, hey, I'm building an ADU, right? Uh, or I'm going to build an ADU in six months. Okay, good. Let's move on.
On, on the other hand. Well, do I, I'll make two points. We had a Taco Bell app. Come here and maybe someone bought a franchise and they're going to put. And they're going to put a, uh, a Taco Bell over there. Let's say that Wendy was half owner of the franchise. If you were half owner of the franchise and that Taco Bell going over there, you couldn't vote to say, hey, approve it or or don't approve it. Because you have a vested, you have a financial interest.
Well, there's, no, but there's a difference between judicial decisions and legislative. And I made it, I will make that clear. If, if. If you are, in the example, he's saying, you know, part owner and and the, and Taco Bell or you. You own fifty one percent of the shares of Taco Bell and somebody comes in here and wants to build a Taco Bell and. You say, yes, you, you have a direct conflict of interest that was a judicial action, you have to. Be smart in how you declare that. I'm the legend, I'm, so I'm talking more on rulemaking. If you're coming in and saying, you know, these are the rules that we're going to make for ADUs. Uh, I might be building an ADU in six months, just wanted to let everybody know. Uh, that's, that's what I'm saying with the, with the rulemaking part of it. And. And really, like I said before at the beginning, is you really don't have to worry about it because many of the code amendments that we're doing are mandated anyway. So you don't have a choice. Right? So you're going to come in and and do what the state tells you to do. It's still good to express. You know, where you might be at financially with those things. It shouldn't have any impact.
Yeah, well, I had to recuse myself. Uh, for a, uh, developer that came in here because my son-in-law works for him.
Yeah.
I mean.
But it was a judicial decision too, it wasn't legislated.
Right, right. I mean, he, they confronted me outside and told me you can't. And you have to recuse yourself until.
The question comes up a lot about legislative stuff. That's why I bring it up is because. You you're, you're not immune to making recommendations to regulations. That's what you're, that's what you're on this board for. And you live in Phoenix, so you can't get away from the fact that you live in here and you're writing rules for the city you live in. That's what your task.
Yeah, right. I eat at Taco Bell, so, you know, it's like.
Yeah, now, me on the other hand, as a planner, I wanted to Taco Bell because I'm tired of driving to Medford all the time to get my burrito.
Well, I got, I got stock in Dutch Brothers, so I mean, I hope they don't come.
All right.
So. Are you leaving?
We are, we are done.
Oh, well.
We're done with the presentation.
Okay, so we're not going to do anything more? I mean, we're not going to have comments from.
Uh, no, there, there's still, sorry, no, there still is, uh. Planning manager reporter. I don't.
Yeah, excuse me. I mean, we'll go quickly, um, is there any old, is there anything, uh, let's see, planners. Planner, uh, commissioners' comments, starting, starting here. Anybody have anything, Chris?
Two things real quick. So a good way to keep yourself out of trouble, I'm kidding you. You are protected in some ways when you're on a commission and you're voting on something, if something happens to. Out there in the world. But on the other hand, you got to get a lot of trouble, you say. When an applicant comes in, you can't say things that are derogatory against somebody. You, 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 you're, you're in the public eye. And if you said.
Right.
That Taco Bell only serves. Poisonous.
Right.
That, that opens you guys up to liability. You don't have immunity.
You don't.
Something stupid in your government, it's derogatory, you can get.
Get on your own.
That's number one. Number two, you hear, hear, hear you talk about the helicopter pad. And people talk about the helicopter pad, but do you know what the helicopter pad is? No.
Yeah.
The, but they, so the helicopter pad, the chunk of land in back of the Barnum subdivision. So, well, the old Anqua Bank was, and and back there was Barnum subdivision, it's the wing in the back, there's a big chunk of land. That has almost no access to it. So people in the planning world, they'll call that the helicopter pad. Because you need a helicopter to take it in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what he's talking about, he's his helicopter pad. So I'm trying to think about things that you. Yes, I'm done.
It's not even in the city anymore. So, I mean, it's. But it came in and it came in through the comp plan.
It is in your grocery store and it will, it will be a subject to annexation at some point.
Yep.
It could have been a golf course. No, really? And the city turned it down. The city turned it down. It was going to be, the, the golf course got built, but it was an eagle point. Okay, so that's, uh, if for commissioners, I have nothing, uh, planners' report.
Uh, just briefly, um, Starbucks opened. Yay.
Yay.
Starbucks.
I love the mural.
Starbucks has, so if anybody asks you, I don't know.
And your, and their, and their grass is green.
Starbucks, uh, had a plumbing issue and a broken water line and.
Already?
Uh, and so Starbucks is, is not open anymore for right now, so. Um, it was a good thing they didn't announce it. They just kind of. But, um, so that, uh, we do have a lot of land use applications, um, coming your way. Um, and just, uh, just know, going back to confidentiality. My, my requirements for confidentiality are much different than. Than yours because I'm privy to things that come in. At the pre-application level that aren't subject to public knowledge. So, um. When you all ask, well, what's going on in the neighborhood? I I I might not be able to tell you everything and there is a lot of. Pre-application conferences that we've had recently and maybe they'll materialize, maybe they won't. But I just want you to all understand, if you hear something and I say, well, we don't have anything right now. It's, it's because I can't really say it until the application is submitted because there is some, you know, proprietary information in there and. Um, everything's subject to public records. So I mean, if somebody did a pre-app and somebody really wanted to know, then they could. Do the records request for the pre-app and and find out, but, um, oftentimes I, I am very selective about who I say. Uh, what to. Um, and same is true with my department staff because.
Colonel Clink on Hogan Zero.
We just want to make sure we're not derailing somebody, especially if we had a contentious application, so.
Alrighty, um, looks like we're going to adjourn. The next meeting is going to be June ninth. Is that still on?
Uh, for now.
Okay, meeting is, it's, uh, eight sixteen. Uh, thank you, folks.
Yep.